Good evening and welcome to the July 22, 2024 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If that hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. Public comments will be heard on any item at the end of this agenda. Please complete a form from the table by the door and give it to the city clerk. You will have four minutes. Following this legislative session, council will convene in a closed session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I invite Pastor Greg Morris from Parkway Trifter God for our city invocation.
Thank you again, members of the city council and mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to represent people of faith and to begin our session with prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, Creator of all mankind, we are so glad that you smile upon us this evening. We recognize your presence with us, we acknowledge that you are for us, and we declare that your Spirit is within us. For without you, we can do nothing, but with you, all things are possible. We state these beliefs in this prayer together because we know that you reminded us in your word that one day we will give an account for every careless word we have spoken. Words that we speak in prayer are powerful. And God, you spoke the worlds into existence, and you reminded us by the wise man Solomon's writings that life and death are in the power of the tongue. As we think about the words that will be used this evening throughout this business session for this great city of Salisbury, help us to verbalize and articulate those that would honor you, honor each other, and would bless our city. We know that careless words, that we will give an account for them, they are empty, they're idle, they're unprofitable, they're inactive, and it's our desire that in everything we do, that we would esteem you and bring distinction to our efforts this evening. We know that you ask us to live clean, pure lives in a broken and corrupted generation, that we are to shine like stars, lighting up a dark world. We know that happy are those who live pure lives, who follow your teachings, who keep your rules, and who obey with all of their hearts. So help us to mind our mental playlist tonight, God. May our thoughts align ourselves with vision for the future of our city while we strengthen the place that we find ourselves in today. Help us, oh God, to hold tightly to the Word of life, because your principles make us happy, and in the path of your commands, happiness is found. The founding fathers of our great nation spoke of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These characteristics are found in your holy word. A far better life is found in you. Where your spirit is, there is liberty, and your word again declares, "Happy is the person whose sins are forgiven." We are grateful, and we thank you for being with us this evening. Bless us and this agenda, and we thank you, almighty God, for meeting with us again. These things we proclaim and declare in the mighty name of Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Morris. I do want to acknowledge that we have Councilwoman Jackson joining us via Zoom this evening. At this time, we'll pivot to our mayor, Randy Taylor, for a reading proclamation.
All right, we do a proclamation today for Disability Pride Month for City of Salisbury. Whereas July is Disability Pride Month, it coincides with the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and offers an opportunity to celebrate and strengthen the pride, power, and unity of people with disabilities, their families, and allies. And whereas disability pride has been defined as accepting and honoring each person's uniqueness, seeing it as a natural and beautiful part of human diversity, and whereas this annual observation observance is used to promote visibility and mainstream awareness of the positive pride felt by people with disabilities, pride that comes from celebrating their heritage, disability culture, and the unique experiences they, as people with differing abilities, lend and contribute to society. And whereas President George H.W. Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, into law on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities by establishing a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And since signed into law, it has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas people with disabilities are the largest and most diverse minority within the population, representing all abilities, ages, races, ethnicities, regions, and socio-economic backgrounds. And whereas the city of Salisbury works with its own Disability Advisory Committee, which was established in October 1, 1991, to ensure that those with disabilities have an equitable opportunity to benefit from and relish the opportunities their pride, their community provides, as the committee assists the mayor through advocacy, education, and referral in order to develop a broader appreciation and an understanding of attributes, people, and disabilities. And whereas the city of Salisbury celebrates and recognizes the 36th, 32nd anniversary of the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the progress that has been made since 1990 by reaffirming the principles of equity, equality, and inclusion, and recommitting city efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Randolph J. Taylor, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim July 24 as Disability Pride Month.
Dom, if you want to say a couple words, we see you on Zoom. I think we can hear you.
Hi, Dom.
Hi, I'm in the car. I apologize for any background noise. Thank you for this proclamation. I think it's done for and that we acknowledge disability. Because a lot of times, there's a huge stigma to the word disability, and a disability can be invisible or visible. One and a, one and a before person has a disability whether we see it or not. And I'm excited that this time and age, that disability pride is something that we're acknowledging. And even as we celebrate the ADA on the 26th, I'm excited for the progress we've made, but especially the progress we will make moving forward.
Thank you, Dom.
Thank you, Dom. Appreciate it.
Yes.
We'll see you.
We have a special proclamation today. Whereas in 1996, the city of Salisbury hired Ms. Kimberly Nichols, an ambitious young woman who would climb the municipal ladder of success, leaving a lasting impression on those she would come in contact with. And whereas in her role as accounts receivable clerk in the finance department, Ms. Nichols spent her first two years helping to ensure the financial stability of the city by receiving and processing payments and by providing top-notch customer service. And whereas in 1998, the position of plans permits, permit processor was posted, Ms. Nichols soon became the kind, welcoming face you saw when dropping off your permit applications to the building, housing, and zoning division. And whereas Ms. Nichols became known for her exceptional work and self-motivation over the five years she worked for the city, and was then hired by the mayor's office to become their new Office Associate Three, where she would later be described by Mayor Barry Tillman as being someone who always gave, gives the extra effort to ensure a successful outcome. And whereas in three short years, Ms. Nichols became the Assistant City Clerk/Records Administrator, where she remained for seven years, preparing for her final promotion to the prestigious position of City Clerk of the City of Salisbury in 2012. And whereas in her role as City Clerk, which she took very seriously, Ms. Nichols learned to adapt to new city council members and mayors and run the department like a well-oil machine. And whereas the city of Salisbury would like to honor Ms. Kimberly Nichols for being an instrumental part of, in making Salisbury, Maryland, a better place, and wish her the best in her retirement. Now therefore, I, DeShawn M. Doughty, President of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2, 2024, as Kimberly R. Nichols Day in our city, in recognition and celebrating of her unwavering dedication to the staff, elected officials, and citizens of the city of Salisbury for 20, 28 years.
All right.
Thank you.
On behalf of the mayor's office, we'd also like to offer our sentiments through a certificate of appreciation. From the city of Salisbury, to thank you for 28 years of service to the city of Salisbury and its citizens. You have worked hard under six mayors and have been employed in five different departments, city departments. Your most important, proudest achievement has been that of the city clerk. Your contributions to the department have not gone unnoticed, and you'll be dearly missed. Thank you for your willingness to make a difference in the city of Salisbury. You are an inspiration to all those around you. Congratulations to your retirement, and we hope it all was worth all the work that you made here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you have to say something, Kim.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Bear with us.
Yes, you're in the middle. You're in the middle.
Surely get up here.
I'm going to take my shoes off.
My toe, I'll be down here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another round of applause for you. And April will Photoshop you in that picture.
Please, Neil.
Her little voice.
Yes, so we are sad that this is Kim's last meeting with us here, but we appreciate the hard work she's done. And just as a special note, you know, you can't, you can't tell that Kim has worked for the city as long as, almost as long as I've been alive, so you definitely can't tell it. So that means the city has not, the city has not stressed her out that much, so. But I told her I'm still going to call her. When I call her, I still want to say, "City Clerk's Office, Kim speaking. Thank you so much." All right, we'll move on. So for today's legislative agenda, we'll go over the consent agenda by our very own city clerk, Kim Nichols. We will have ordinances number 2878, 2879, 2880, 2881, read by our city attorney, Ashley Boucher. Public comments, administration and council comments, and then we'll adjourn to closed session. I will call for a motion and a second to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'm back.
Sniped again.
Yes.
The consent agenda tonight, we have the April 25, 2024 budget work session minutes, June 10, 2024 council meeting minutes, June 17, 2024 work session and special meeting minutes, July 1, 2024 work session minutes, July 8, 2024 council meeting minutes, and resolution number 3356 approving the appointment of Jeremy Alexander to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending July 2026.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Jeremy Alexander, we appreciate your work that you'll do on the Human Rights Advisory Committee. Thank you.
He's here.
Oh, you're, oh, oh, Mr., yes. Let's all give Jeremy a round of applause for joining our Human Rights Advisory Committee. Thank you so much. We appreciate your, your service to this committee. We can't wait to see what you'll, what impact you'll make to that committee. Thank you again. All right, we'll turn to our city attorney, Ashley Boucher, for our ordinances. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2878 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me.
No.
I filled out a form to make prior to the vote.
Ms. Royson, public comments are made at the end of the agenda. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Boucher. I do have to, I understand. I do have to, there, I would have to ask you, if you, if you continue to, Ms., Ms., Ms. Royson, if you continue, can you go ahead and, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to write a comment after the reading of the agenda.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you. And you've now been formally asked to leave. You've been asked to leave. Ms. Royson, thank you.
He's not.
Thank you so much.
It's a good point.
Ms. Royson, thank you so much. We do, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. She's been, thank you.
I'm sorry. Has there been a second and a vote?
Yes, Michelle motioned, and April 2nd.
Thank you.
Well, we, yeah, we need an approval.
Okay.
All approve, say aye.
No, there was a motion and a second.
Yep, to read it.
To read it.
Sorry. Ordinance number 2878, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Title 10 entitled Health and Safety of the Salisbury City Code by adding a new chapter 8.36 entitled Abandoned Shopping Carts. This is before council for second reading. Pursuant to the last meeting, there was a change as requested, so I will highlight the one and only change, which is to new section 8.36.090 subsection C, which with the amended language will read as follows. For each lost, stolen, or abandoned shopping cart impounded by the city, the city shall issue a $25 fine to the cart owner unless the cart owner can demonstrate it took adequate procedures to prevent cart abandonment, loss, or theft as reasonably determined by the director or his or her designee. That is the only change.
Thank you. Need any discussion from council? Okay. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to amend it as read by Ms. Boucher.
So moved.
Second.
Got it. Okay, great. And all those in favor of ordinance number 2878 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote on the amendment first.
Oh, s, all those in favor of amending ordinance number 2878 at, for reading it as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All those in favor of ordinance number 2878 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2879 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2879, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to approve a budget amendment of the FY 24 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Blue Hair and Agility Association of Delaware. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2879, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2880 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2880, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to approve a budget amendment of the FY 24 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Blue Hair and Agility Association of Delaware. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2879, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2880 for second reading.
So moved.
Second. Ordinance number 2880, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending section 15.26 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Rental or Residential Premises Do Require Registration of Short-Term Rental Properties? There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2880 for second, to approve ordinance number 2880, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2881 for first reading.
So moved.
Second. Ordinance number 2881, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a cannabis dispensary at 733 South Salisbury Boulevard and the general commercial district as required by section 17.36.040 of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas Elevated Mind and Wellness LLC has submitted a request in accordance with the provisions of section 17.36.040 of Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code to operate a cannabis dispensary in an existing commercial retail building located at 733 South Salisbury Boulevard in the general commercial zoning district. And whereas the mayor and council may grant an ordinance permit for certain uses as specifically listed in Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, particularly section 17.36.040 and city council section 17.12.080D. And whereas the Salisbury Planning Commission reviewed the request for an ordinance permit at its June 20, 2024 meeting, and gave a favorable recommendation to mayor and city council on the request to establish the cannabis dispensary as authorized by the state of Maryland regulations. And whereas city council has determined that based upon a review of all materials presented, the request should be granted pursuant to section 17.36.040 of Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Ordinance number 2881, which is an ordinance, ordinance permit reads section one, that an ordinance permit to authorize the operation of a cannabis dispensary be and hereby is granted to Elevated Mind and Wellness LLC for the property located at 733 South Salisbury Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. Section two, Elevated Mind and Wellness LLC shall ensure compliance with all applicable state and local laws. The city council reserves the right to conduct periodic review of the operation of the dispensary in order to ensure compliance with such laws, and city council reserves the right to revoke this ordinance permits upon a finding of non-compliance.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2881, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll pivot to, to public comments. As a reminder, each person has four minutes for comment, and we will go to County Executive Julie Giordano first.
How are you all this evening? Thanks for having me. I just wanted to come by and I wanted to fill the city council in on just a couple of things. So first and foremost, I wanted to give a huge shout out to council president, DeShawn Doughty, for your comment the other week on the importance of the balance of government for the executive and the legislative branch. So I do appreciate that. We have a very well-funded and a well, with influential people campaign coming, so I do appreciate you. But actually, the main reason that I'm here is to talk about the encryption that has occurred. So I want the city council to understand that we as a county understand the importance and the necessity of encryption, but we also recognize the importance of transparency and adhering to PIA requirements. And so with that being said, I just wanted to applaud the Salisbury Police Department for adhering, or for not adhering to switching everything over, kind of without letting your people know and your constituents know. So I really wanted to give a shout out to them. I wanted to let you all know that because we have gone to, we have moved over to encryption without really following through with a lot of different things, we have put out an email to a lot of our news outlets and things like that, of people that are willing to partner with us to make sure that we are adhering to transparency and PIA requirements. So we have put that out there to numerous news agencies. We've talked about what we would like and what we would like out of it to make sure that the media and the public have access to that information, because per the Attorney General, it is deemed as public information. So I just wanted to let you know, and I just wanted to commend your police department for standing strong and making sure that your constituents know exactly what's going on. So that's all I wanted to update you on, so.
Thank you, county's.
Thank you.
Yes. Carolyn Wogomuth.
My name is Carolyn Wogomuth. I'm a city resident. If you missed the city council's special meeting on Saturday, it's not your fault. The five-hour special meeting was not posted on the city's website until two minutes, two days before the meeting, and if perchance you did see the posting, you had no clue regarding what the city council was planning to discuss as the agenda provided no information. My emailed questions to city council members prior to the event went unanswered. Here are just a few. Why was only two days' public notice given? Why was a space above a bar chosen for an official city meeting? Why wasn't the meeting video recorded by PAC 14? Why wasn't a Zoom option available? Why wasn't there a city press release or Facebook announcement? Who were the scheduled speakers and what were their topics? And why were public comments not allowed? After the event, I did receive one reply. In the past year, special meetings called at the last minute have significantly increased in number and have resulted in some immediate and devastating changes. The sale of the downtown parking lots is a prime example of one such special meeting. Citizens deserve answers prior to and at all events. The latest announcement of this meeting with no specifics again demonstrates how public trust continues to be eroded. Perhaps your next special meeting should be centered around effective communication with the public and how to begin restoring public trust, which leads me to another city council action that has resulted in a lack of trust. Last week, the Maryland Circuit Court again denied Brad Gillis a special exception for increased density to build nearly double the maximum number of apartments allowed in the downtown area. Judge Jackson's ruling reaffirmed his March denial and called into question the city's belated entry into the matter. Following the March denial decision, the city council, behind closed doors, employed a law firm to support the developer in his efforts to relitigate the case at the May rehearing. The judge ruled that the city had no standing. The council should be embarrassed by this secret action, which resulted in a total waste of taxpayer money on a fool's mission. The city council essentially aided the developer in a mission to ignore state law. The city council owes taxpayers an apology. Your behavior regarding the downtown density matter opens the door for increased scrutiny regarding questionable motives relative to personal financial considerations. The city council was elected to represent the interests of city citizens and taxpayers, not the interests of developers. Some of you do represent us. Leadership, however, has repeatedly demonstrated their desire to fast-track actions that only benefit developers' wants over taxpayers' needs. If you won't represent taxpaying citizens, you should simply step aside for someone who will. And I need to, I know my time's practically up, and I did not anticipate having to do this, but you've just ejected a city taxpayer and resident. According to Resolution 2396, passed in 2024, which is the most recent amendment to the city council regulations and rules of order, which is on your website, I refer you to section 6F, Public Input. The council president shall accept public comments from citizens during council consideration of an item in addition to a general comments period. Citizens have a right to speak to anything that's up there for a second reading prior to your vote. You just ejected a citizen who was trying to do that. That's unacceptable.
My name is Holly Worthington. I own Worthington Realty Downtown, which is across from Lot 15. Above my office, I have residencies, apartments that have been there for many, many years and utilize Lot 15 for their parking. We've been going through a lot as far as these special exceptions trying to happen for density, which we all know there is no special exception for density. The city has made me go to tremendous measures monetarily to try and correct its decisions regarding the density ruling. City Library now has plans to have a thousand-seat auditorium in its place. City Library now has plans to have a thousand-seat auditorium in its place when there is events. Where would all these people be parking? Just this past Tuesday at eleven thirty-four AM, I observed there were thirty-four cars in Lot fifteen. This is the lot that is part of this development plan for apartments. This lot was not a part of the original envisioned Salisbury Downtown master plan. It was to remain a lot as far as that plan was. I believe that they added Lot fifteen into the mix when they decided to do Unity Square, taking some of the development area away from the developer. My problem is that this keeps going and going, costing money with attorneys, and every time they keep getting the same ruling. You know, it's obvious that, you know, it shouldn't be done. But I hope you all can take that into consideration if it comes back to your drawing board. You know, there's a reason why the courts have denied it twice. There's also a reason why the zoning board of appeals also denied it. So just letting you guys know my thoughts on the whole matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Taylor.
Robert Taylor, longtime city resident. I want to double down on what Ms. Wogomuth just said about ejecting Nancy Roysum. She was attempting to address a matter that was under consideration by the council, and as she pointed out, the rules expressly provide the right for citizens to address that. I don't know that that's a crime or anything, but I certainly think it warrants an apology. Now, I think the city also owes a lot of people an apology for what has happened in the litigation that was just mentioned by Ms. Worthington. This whole matter of the case that was resolved finally last week came about because the city thinks or thought, I guess maybe hopefully I can use the past tense, that you could use a special exception by the Board of Appeals to increase the density above what's provided as the maximum in the code. Maryland law has been clear for fifty years, when the General Assembly changed the state zoning enabling law, that you can't do that. Nothing new about this, and it was brought to the attention of the city and the board's attorney, Rena Patel, back in November when that hearing was held. I know that because I'm the one that did it. And I provided legal analysis, and it's essentially the same analysis that was used in court for the judge to make his ruling. So it wasn't a new ruling. It wasn't something that's unheard of. And frankly, I think the city owes the residents who have gotten this straightened out by going to court, owes them their legal fees, to be honest with you. I mean, this is a tremendous mistake. It's like the mistake that you just made by ejecting Ms. Roysum. It's essentially illegal. And I mean, this has been going on now for quite a while. Now, it's time after this decision to change the zoning code. One thing that needs to be changed immediately is to remove the provision in there about having a special exception to increase density. We now know that's illegal. It's been illegal, as I said, for fifty years. So it's time to get around to changing that. We also need, I think, to make some changes in the density for apartments and parking in downtown. We've removed the requirement to have any off-site parking for apartment projects at the same time as we've sold all of the parking lots. Now, you know, you talk about stupid. This is like painting yourself into a corner. So we need to, number one, reduce the dense, forty units per acre is very, very high density to begin with. And secondly, we need to put in a parking requirement. We heard about the ADA Act earlier, the proclamations. If there's no onsite parking for apartments, where do the handicap people park? Because if there's no parking, there's not going to be any handicap parking. Doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that one out. So there's a lot of things here that need to be done on this zoning code, and it's time to get around and begin to do it. We now have the court's opinion. And the second thing we need, third thing we need to do is I think we can probably rescind the deal that was made with Gillis because they haven't performed their part of the contract. Yes, it's been held up because of the zoning, but that's life. It got held up, and I think they're now in arrears. And I believe there's contract law doctrine that something like that can be rescinded, even though the property has been deeded over. Jack Heath did that as he was leaving office. Another absurdity. Thank you.
Thank you. Vaughn Siggers.
Vaughn Siggers, City of Salisbury. Want to thank you all for the amendment that you made to the twenty-eight seventy-eight shopping cart situation. It makes so much more sense now and it seems so much more doable and fair to all those parties involved. And if I may, while I'm here, I'd like to say that declaring those parking lots surplus happened when I served as president of the City Council. I didn't agree with it then, and I don't agree with it now. And unfortunately, it is causing a whole lot of problems that I don't know when they'll ever be worked out, but I didn't see them as surplus, and I still don't see them as surplus. I also like to say that it really hurts to see a citizen ejected from the meeting. I would hope there would be less rigidity and perhaps a little bit more finesse. I know that she was out of order according to the standards and the decorum that you've established here, but I would hope that an opportunity would be given to just hear what she had to say and correct her. And if she needed to be removed or if it was something that she needed to just wait for our order to have the matter addressed, to have it addressed. But it hurts to see a citizen ejected like that. Finally, but most certainly not least, I'd like to say that I so thank Kim Nichols for the years of service that she's provided, all the kindness, all the gentleness. Your person has been perfect for the city, and your professionalism has been so appreciated and your friendship. So I hope you enjoy all of the gardening, all the baking, all the soups, and all of the things that make you happy. Wish you well.
Thank you. Lynn Bratton.
My name is Lynn Bratton. I live on South Boulevard, and I'm a citizen of the City of Salisbury for many years. You just took my thunder, too, but thank you. I consider Ms. Nichols a personal friend, a friend of the City of Salisbury, a guiding light for our community. She has led with professionalism. Her institutional knowledge goes far below, far beyond any of us, and your service is going to be, you're going to be missed. And I appreciate all you've done for me during my illness and for what you've done for the city, so thank you for that. Other things, we have to get down to the other things. I know there's several members of the City Council who have routinely asked for updates on Vision Zero, Carroll Street, highways, byways, circles, bike rails, all of that sort of thing. And I do think maybe it's time that we really got back to the twelve million dollar Vision Zero issues there. One of the, on page two, there was something about rapid decision-making or rapid developments. And I believe there were some rapid developments made on Waverly. I think there were some knee-jerk reactions to try and solve things, spend money, make it look like we had done something. And I do think we need to now go back and revisit all of our decisions, look at, see if they've done any good or if they haven't, if they've done harm. And if they were harmful, then let's correct them. I'd like to ask for information at some point about how much money it costs to originally do the stuff at Waverly Drive and then putting down all the little armadillos that I call them along the way. And then how much did it cost to undo all the little armadillos and the waving and the wobbling and the back and forth? I will say that I'm actually seeing a few bikers now on it because it makes sense. You go one direction, you go the other direction. That's kind of how we all grew up, learning how to ride a bicycle, right? You didn't like go over here and then you go over here. So I appreciate that Waverly is making some more sense, but I think we need to look now at Carroll. I think we need to look at what's happening at the potential for Eastern Shore Drive. I mean, that is one of the only places we even have Christmas parades anymore. So if we put something down the middle of that, what's going to happen there? It takes a lot of the stress off of Route thirteen, north-south, by scooting down Eastern Shore Drive. That's what it was meant for. Mr. Pete Cooper designed it. He was an outstanding engineer and city builder. So I think we need to go back and see what's going on with all of those developments. Carroll Street has more space for bicycles than for emergency vehicles trying to get into the ER. If you're coming from Hebron, trying to make a right-hand turn to get into Waverly Drive to get up to ER, and there's caught somebody ahead of you, you can't get there because there's nowhere for those cars to go. They can't pull out and pull in front of traffic the way it may be a fire engine could. So I'm really concerned about that. I'm glad I don't have to use it, but that does concern me as a citizen. I also think it's data-driven, so we need to look at how many deaths it really has prevented. What were the deaths ten years ago? How much has, how many, what are they now? I mean, has it dropped? Assuming for, you know, extrapolating for increased population, I know a good statistician can do all that sort of thing. Has it made a difference? Has it improved anything? I seem to feel like we have more reports of hit-and-run accidents than ever. I mean, they just seem to be popping up in the news all the time, hit-and-runs, deaths, you know, people getting hurt. So maybe they've helped, maybe it would have been worse. It's kind of one of those things, had it not happened, would it have even been worse? I don't know. But I think we need to go back and really look at the data and get some ideas of what's going on and don't do rapid developments in honor of a grant that we got. Okay, we talked about the parades in Eastern Shore Drive, and let's move on. The other thing that I want to call attention to, and I think Ms. Worthington did it and so did Mr. Taylor, as a taxpaying citizen, and I've got rental property, so I pay a lot of taxes, ergo, my tenants also contribute to that. We need to know where that money went that hired Mrs. Patel and why she was hired. So I just don't see why the city would have anybody representing a developer unless they were there representing the interests of the committee that made the original decision, which was a city committee. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments.
I think we have Sarah Price.
Yes.
Sarah, I think it's your turn if you'd like to speak.
Thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. President and honorable council members. I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Alliance. I just wanted to thank you for your attention to our concerns about the shopping cart ordinance. I know it's an issue that everyone wants to see addressed, us included. I learned just today, actually, that the lead time on ordering shopping carts for a retailer is at least six months, if not longer. So everyone would love to be able to keep their carts on their property if at all possible. We are supportive of the amendment that was added on today, and we look forward to working with the city on this issue as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to administration and council comments. We'll start with you, Mayor.
Two subjects. One, as it relates to the downtown project. Couple months ago, month and a half ago, I brought in a few architects locally and an engineer, all local guys, all talented people, who were concerned enough with the advent of now the performing arts. They want to be a part of a design team to put together a comprehensive plan for the downtown, which incorporates, you know, the needs and uses for all that's being planned for down there. There's a lot of moving parts that we've all discussed before, parking, accessible parking, overnight parking, daily parking, convenience parking and all that, and all the things we want, misuse, residential, more heads and beds, and the incorporation of a performing arts facility. So that project's probably thirty percent done. We're going to work on, keep on working. We've got a meeting this week. And then at some point, we've already notified Brad, we've also notified the university we're going to have them in, and we're going to look at options and try to put some pieces together. So to your point, I agree with you. We're working on it, and we're hopefully getting a little bit different mix and perspective on it, which I think we desperately need for it to be successful. That's issue one, too.
Mayor, before you continue, is that like an open meeting? Can the public weigh in on that, that those meetings that you're having or what?
Oh, it wasn't designed that way, no.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, we were, these are concept drawings, and it's not anything permanent. It's just proposals that, you know, the developer obviously can, and the university's going to have to buy into, but at least it. The problem is, is, you know, I don't want to get into a big, long-term conversation about this, but the problem is, you know, typically a developer has a site. They own the site, they provide everything on that site. Well, this is sort of interconnected. We're talking about redevelopment of a downtown, which is interdependent, and also, it's also interdependent upon the existing people that are there. I mean, that's one of the challenges when you sold all your parking lots or selling all your parking lots, is that it's always been, that the downtown has always been dependent upon the parking. So if you're taking their parking, well, then how do you put it back and allow for the new demand? So it's kind of a complicated model. It's not simple. And so that's why, you know, we brought a few architects and an engineer involved, and I think they've done a pretty, pretty good job giving people options or giving these guys some options, and we'll see how it goes from there. But I think we're in a better position than we've ever been as it relates to this whole town redevelopment position, and then we'll begin to share it with the public and give them options. But that was issue one. Issue two was actually Councilman Blake brought this to my attention, that hopefully everybody kept their water quality report, and it was good news that there was more than good news in terms of the water quality in the City of Salisbury. So just want to make that point. And I was going to let Andy comment relative to Carroll Street and maybe the Vision Zero stuff that we've been working on as well.
Sure. Yeah, I'll leave you with that. All right. Thanks. Yeah. I know Councilwoman DeShiel is excited and Councilwoman Blake are excited to get updates on these items. They are forthcoming. We are going to be scheduled for the work session in August fifth for some updates on all of this stuff. We understand that there's a lot of federal funding that has been awarded to us, but we want to make sure before we sign on the dotted line that we are spending our match money and there's that funding appropriately and responsibly. So there's been a lot of review going on internally, which we'll have further conversations with this group in a couple of weeks. So yes, we don't want to move forward with bad designs or more failed implementation when it comes to bike infrastructure. I just have a Vision Zero pen, so if people want those, we have several of those. Joking aside, a couple other project updates. If people have been in and around the parking garage, they see some construction going on. This is deferred infrastructure maintenance that we've been scheduling. It is finally coming to fruition. It is a safe parking garage. I think people have been asking a lot, should I park there? Can I park there? Absolutely. We are working. It's a little bit of an inconvenience sometimes, but we are working forward with some delayed deferred maintenance and construction, but it is, but it's safe, and the whole goal is to have a prolonged life of that parking structure. And then Unity Square, it had been down for a couple of weeks with the spray fountain there, but we have swapped out the foot pedestal for a hand pedestal. Hopefully that knocklawn wood will prevent damage that continues to happen there. That is a great feature in these hot days. We've seen a lot of kids, a lot of families enjoying that. So hopefully that will be back online this week, if not tomorrow. So hopefully if people are looking to cool off, if the rain holds off, come on out to Unity Square if you've not been out recently. Final comment, my partner across the table, that we've looked at each other for several years now and shared a wall in the old building. Kim, it's been great working alongside you. I really appreciate your mentorship and friendship along the time, so you will be missed. I got you for two more weeks, but remain a friend. You always got a spot up here with us when you come visit.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll pivot to you, Councilwoman Jackson, if you're still with us.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
First, I would like to say to Kim, she's going to be missed. She was the sweetest person I've ever met. She feels like family. And to me, she is family. Nine years I've known her, and there has not been anything that I've ever asked her to do for me or accommodate me she hasn't done. She's a marvelous person, and I can say again, you're going to be missed greatly. I know I am. I can't speak for anybody else, but I know that I'm going to miss you. I'm Julie, great as well. I have no, nothing bad to say about Julie, but you have been like a mentor. You have been like a mentor to me as well, as far as doing some things, you know, keeping me straight, keeping me on the straight and narrow. Also, I've got to mention, I love you, Kim, and take care of yourself. I have, August the fifth, at the work session, we will be having I have, August the 5th, at the work session, we'll be having a discussion about the hometown heroes. I would like to see all veterans and veterans' family attend this meeting at 4:30, and if you know of any veterans or veterans' family, please relay this message, August the 5th. It's very important. We just want to do something for our veterans, the people who served the country and saved our lives. Also, on August the 10th, the VFW 1015 Now will be hosting a unity day, free to all. Come out and enjoy yourselves. I can tell you, Ms. Lynn Bratton has been out there. She comes every year, basically. She comes and supports, and I would love to see my entire city council and the mayor there as well. It's a nice event. It's honoring our veterans and honoring our community as well. I also have another, my granddaughter, who just turned 17 today, very, very intelligent young lady. All through school, she has made a 4.50, and next year, she will be attending ASU for nursing. So happy birthday to Ray Hitch. My mom loves you, and I'm so very proud of you. Your accomplishments and the things you want to, she never hesitates about anything. She even works two jobs and goes to school, and she's maintaining that 4.50. And also, my daughter, my oldest daughter, whose birthday is the 24th of July, I'd like to make a shout out to her. Happy birthday, Dia. Let the whole world know I'm proud of you as well. I miss being at the council meetings, and hopefully, I have one more hurdle to cross, and I will be back in August. So, you know, it's been kind of trying for me, but I'm coming back.
Can't wait to have you back.
Yeah, thank you.
And happy birthday to your daughter and granddaughter. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman DeShiel?
A couple of things, thank you. One thing that I noticed, again, I will call the newbie because my newbie status also is thanks to Kim. She has guided me, I mean, cellphone, she is on speed dial, and I thank you for that because everyone else will. DeSean is new, Randy's new, but Michelle, Angela, and April have all been wonderful, but Kim has been my go-to. So I thank you for that, Kim. Listening to the council meetings, I feel that one particular item that keeps coming up, I want to thank Bob Taylor for all the research and the communication he gives us regarding the zoning issue. And given what he has said, I'm not an attorney, I am not on the zoning appeals, I'm not on either of those, but I, if that, if it is this unequal with what the state has written already, I think it would behoove this county, the city, to be on the same page with other established zoning codes by using the verbiage or whatever we are not, we're not consistent with. Thank you, Lynn, for Carroll Street. Andy is hoping I'll go away with Carroll Street, but he knows better. I'm not finished yet, but thank you, Mayor, for pursuing this. I do appreciate it. A shout out to Rachel Manning with the city because she definitely is doing her best in doing neighborhood walks. And those of you that are in the Doverdale area, she's doing a walk this Wednesday. I've tried to go to each one and missed my own district, so. And one other thing I would like to share, and that is, I'm giving you a heads up, there is a free dental clinic coming in September. It's, I'm giving you way, way, you know, advance notice. It's September 13th and 14th. It's close to my heart because I co-chaired it for two go-arounds, and we supplied over $1 million in volunteer help from hygienists and dentists from around the state. It's at the Civic Center, and it is free. So I want, I'm sorry. So I would like you to go at any time, just Google EasternSureMom.org, and there are plenty of slots for volunteers, and please make sure that you support it in any way you can. It is phenomenal. So thank you for the turnout again tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gregory?
Well, I know a lot of people have said stuff about Kim and how wonderful she is. I gotta say, I have a unique perspective because when I came on board, we almost immediately went into lockdown a couple of months later. So I was very, very lost, and her guidance was incredibly, incredibly clutch there. I really appreciated it. She's been an amazing person to work with, and I'm going to miss you dearly, really, truly. Julie, you got your work cut out for you, but I know you're ready for it. I know you're able, you're gonna, you're gonna meet and exceed expectations, I know. So I'm looking forward to working with you now. I just want to put another, a little plug out for an event. There's a ribbon cutting this Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:00 for one of the downtown businesses, Delmarva Homegrown. If you haven't had a chance to stop in there, it is the cutest plant shop you would possibly see. I really am going to end up spending way too much money there, I can tell you that right now. It's already become a problem. But it is just an amazing facility, and the folks, the owners are fantastic people. They're just lovely people, and I would highly recommend everybody come out and support them. You know, the discussion about parking, I want to say that, you know, the discussion about disability parking, that has been a long-term discussion that I have been having with the previous administration, the current administration. I'm happy to say that they've always been very willing to listen about it. We have done walks downtown to identify places that would be best for that. I have personally pulled my son around downtown with his wheelchair and had him test the grounds, and because of that, we now have a crosswalk leading from the parking garage to across the street where the new headquarters is. So, you know, change is not easy, especially infrastructure change, but it is coming. We are working on it. So I just, I want people to understand that there are people who are, who are listening behind the scenes, who are doing, doing the things that need to be done to make things more accessible for everybody, and I really greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President?
Thank you. I've got several announcements and a few things to say. Thanks to Councilwoman DeShiel for bringing this to my attention, but there is a blood drive here, North Division Street, Friday, the 26th, from 9:30 to 2:30. The blood mobile will be right out front, I believe. Is that correct? I think it'll be right out front. It's from 9:30 to 2:30, so if you feel like you're, you want to come down, or you're just walking by, please pop in and donate some blood. Save a life, it's very appreciated. And just last week, again, the blood bank announced they are in critical shape in regards to O and O-positive blood. So that's the primary that they need. Also, on this past Friday, I went on a trolley tour with the new employees for the City of Salisbury, and it was wonderful to be able to welcome, I think, seven or eight new employees for a variety of departments across the city, and it was really nice. It's a good onboarding activity, and plus, you always learn about the new employees and the people that are working for us, and get to see all the great things that are going on in the city. So that was really nice. Again, on last Friday, a lot of things happened on Friday, the third Friday was a huge success, and there was a table and a booth down there with several committees together. I know the Human Rights Committee was one of the tables that was there, and so that was really nice to see our committees out and greeting residents. That was very awesome. Thank you for that. And I want to say that this past Saturday, our retreat for the city in setting goals with Mayor Taylor and the council went really, really well. I thought the visions were very close together. We had so much in common, which was really nice, I thought. And we spent a big part of the time talking about vision and how we want to move forward in the city and different priorities, and I thought that was really, really good. And we came up with some really, really interesting collaborative things to move forward with. So I'm excited to look forward to all of that and putting those things in motion. I want to give, oh, a shout out to April. We really need you back here, April. I don't know if she's still, we really do miss you. Oh, there she is. Please come back. We need to be balanced up here. It's okay.
Got to keep y'all straightened out.
Please, please straighten us out. Okay, so, but I really do, I cannot leave this evening without giving my deepest and my heartfelt thank you for Kim Nichols. She's, she truly is like the fresh honey biscuits, the homemade fudge, the warm cup of tea, the hot cocoa on a snowy morning. You really are, Kim. You are the sweetest, the most lovinest person ever, and you really have guided so many city council members through the process.
Yes.
Keeping us on track with the agenda, answering any question, no matter how ridiculous the questions are, you're very patient.
Yes.
And you're, you're so, you're so wonderful at your job. You truly will be missed, and with a tear in my eye and my, my heart with a little sad face, I do wish you the best of everything. Enjoy your retirement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Just to further along, Kim, yes, you will be missed, absolutely. As, on a personal note, it was lovely to meet you, what, 15 or so years ago, when we attended, we attended church together, and you were nurturing and just loving then, and you welcomed my family and I, and you did some, some very personal things for my family, and we appreciate that, just for loving us. And then who knew that those years later, we would end up working together, and I would be bugging you every single day, endlessly. But you answer every question, you, you do every task, and you do it with patience and a smile, and I'm going to miss hearing your voice and seeing your face. So thank you so much, Kim.
Thank you.
Like Councilwoman said, there is a neighborhood walk this Wednesday. It is in the Doverdale Park. I'm excited, that's District 2, so we'll be there. And then immediately following, we'll have our Housing Action Committee with the council, and again, one of those topics that we were discussing last week, we'll finish it, we'll talk about it again, is that zoning that Mr. Taylor has brought up again. So we do recognize that, and our housing director has been, has some ideas, so I'm excited to where we'll move, and we'll pivot with that. I do want to thank council and administration. Counsel, I gotta split you two up. Council administration for Saturday, our board retreat, our council retreat, it was amazing. We had a good time. The visioning session, it was really good. I want to thank Dr. Deriker from, with his group and his partner for coming and lending their time to the city pro bono, so I want to thank him for that. Thank Rudy Joe's for lending their facility, again, pro bono. We appreciate them for being partners. And again, it was a wonderful session, those who attended, we thank you for attending as well. And I look forward to, we're going to share our, our actual vision and our topics that we discussed with you all in just a few short moments, so I can't wait to share that, I can't wait to see what will come of that. And this won't be the last time that we'll have that. So I'm very hopeful and glad that we brought that back and that we're continuing to do that as well. I do want to mention, I know we have some former city employees, Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Diane is here. We have Christine Chestnut from our Housing Department, so thank you all for coming back. We didn't scare you guys away from visiting the city, so thank you all, and thank you for your work that you've done here. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned, and I do, I will call for a motion in a second to convene a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or official over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any, or other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals under the authority of Maryland Open Meetings Law, Annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions, Article Section 3-305, subsection B, and 1. The purpose of this closed session is to select the Director of Information Services. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry, I call for a motion in a second, first.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.